November fourteenth, regular town council meeting to order. Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmaker.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Any amendments to the agenda? Public comment, Melissa.
Well, first I would say that you, we received a written comment. You have that in front of you from Rachel Spurrier. And first up to speak is William Jenkins.
My name's Dr. Bill Jenkins. I reside at 5507 Sugarloaf Court. Good evening, Town Council. Item six E on tonight's agenda is an executive session in part to determine positions for negotiating and instructing negotiators related to Ladera Phase Two annexation to include issues related to financing capital improvements. Ladera has submitted an initial proposal term sheet and more recently, an updated proposed term sheet. Both of these term sheets are part of the public record and available for any town citizen to review. Without going into all the details, a couple of examples are worth noting. The original term sheet proposed grandfathering their asphalt plant into the town for a term of five years and exempting all asphalt sales from town's sales tax during that term. While the latest term sheet proposes a 10-year grandfathering period. The prior term sheet proposed a negotiated limit for their portion of capital improvements related to County Road Five and Kecter Road. Ladera's portion of the costs to be paid by Ladera at the time of construction. The current term sheet moves capital improvement costs from the developer to the business improvement district to be paid over time by increases in sales taxes for retail sales within the business improvement district. In other words, the town pays for the capital improvements upfront and is repaid for the Ladera developers' portion over many years by taxpayers. Does this end up being a multimillion dollar taxpayer-paid CIP rather than the developer covering their fair share? Folks, why is the town determining these important matters behind closed doors? Why is this not a public process where citizens of the town can have real input into the deal that is being made with the developer? We're talking about millions of dollars here. Why can't the town council discuss these matters in the sunshine with the ability for public to provide input? How is it in the best interest of the town and its taxpayers to have these discussions in private behind closed doors without public oversight? With this approach, I believe that the citizens will hear about the deal specifics as part of a resolution to adopt the deal's terms and be given three minutes to comment just prior to a final vote of the town council. This is not the way I want my town to operate. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Melissa?
Jason Maxi.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak to you all tonight. My name is Jason Maxi. I live over in Gill. Who knows where Gill is at? Some of you might be wondering why a guy from Gill is all the way over here in the town of Timneth. Gill is about five miles north of Cursey. Well, to cut straight to the chase, I wanted to come out, introduce myself to you all, let you all know that I'm decided to run for county commissioner. Now, that's not until next year. I actually announced back in June, a little bit early, kind of a soft announce. And with the parade season behind us and jumping into as many parades and town festivals as I could, I figured the next best step was to come out, make sure that I introduced myself to all the towns that were in Weld County and to some of the residents as well. Now, I know that Timneth doesn't have too much area in Weld County, just a little bit of annex land up around Highway 14 and between 13 and 15. But regardless, the town has some ground in Weld County and I wanted to come out and say hi. Let me tell you a little bit about myself first. Been married to my wife Elena for, excuse me, 23 years, actually, 23 years. I about said 13, 23. Little, little slip there. Good thing she's not in the audience right now. We have two kids. One is a senior in college in central Nebraska at Hastings University, and the other one is a freshman, a new freshman up in South Dakota School of Mines in Rapid City. We lived on a small acreage south of Gill for about 13 years now. However, my roots in Weld County go way deeper than 13 years. My grandparents on my dad's side purchased a dairy farm in the mid 50s, just on the west side of Cursey. So, love that farm, been on that farm a long time. And my, my parents on my grandparents, excuse me, my, my grandparents on my mom's side spent time in teaching in District Six as well as banking and also as the Evans Chamber of Commerce Director for quite a few years. You might be asking why I would want to run for county commissioner. I mean, that's probably the million dollar question, right? Bottom line is, I hope like you all in the communities you live, I love Weld County. Families have a lot of history there, and I just want to continue the service to the residents and the businesses that make Weld County such a great place to live and work. Commissioner Mike Freeman is the current commissioner for District One. He's term limited at the end of next year. And I just want to, you know, with my two kids on to college and with the timing seeming right, after a lot of prayer and consideration with my wife, we figured it was a good next step in service to our community. I do currently work for Weld County. I'm the director for the Oil and Gas Energy Department. I've been doing that for about the last five years, and I've served on multiple boards for Weld County over the, over my prior life before being an employee, Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, Board of Health, et cetera. Currently a deacon on my church board as well. My kids have been active in 4H FFA sporting activities, and me and my wife have supported them over the years. And I believe all those things culminate into what would make me a good county commissioner. So with that being said, I think there's a few things just to close if, for a few more seconds here. Respect for private property rights. I think everybody can, can understand that Weld County was built on agriculture. I want to maintain our agricultural heritage as well. Energy development, you all know energy development is very important to our city, our county, excuse me, and our state. And there's a lot going on in the energy sector right now. And so I think that that's an important area as well as other areas that are very impactful to your town, such as water, growth, transportation. Those are all things we need to partner on. Thank you very much for your guys' time. I will send a follow-up email to you all with some more contact information in case you'd like to chat a little bit more in the future, but I appreciate the few minutes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We can always use somebody good running. Thank you.
Amy Speed.
Didn't print it out because, you know, the environment. Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. My name's Amy Speed, and my husband and I live in Timneth Ranch North. We're both Fort Collins natives. I'm actually an alum of Timneth Elementary, and I have seen this community grow from a small farming community to what it is today. I also am excited to see about what it will look like and feel like tomorrow. I work for the communications firm, actually, that represents Ladera, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here as a citizen of this community and someone who really cares about the future of this community and what stands to happen based on the, the development proposed. Pardon me, this is a little small. Sorry, I just lost my notes. I should have printed it out. I'll go ahead and speak from memory. I really want to bring to attention the, the petition that's being circulated that seems to be based from the group who is opposed to what I believe to be opposed to growth. I believe that what Ladera is proposing is not something that is purely, you know, developmental in, in nature, but truly an investment in the community. Giving my family, my children, my two young daughters, something that, you know, we can really call our own within this community. Something that is based within fact, based within the best intentions of the community, but also based in the growth that is ahead for Timneth. We can't simply be a place for people to live. We can't simply be a place for people to, you know, come to our fairs and our carnivals and things that, you know, we're putting on within the community. But let's build something that is very much beyond the, the confines of, you know, what Fort Collins has to offer in terms of commerce, in terms of attractions, in terms of, you know, something to do, something to be a part of in Timneth. I think this, it really does provide something beyond that. What I am understanding, based on what's being mailed to me about, you know, declining to sign or, you know, kind of something against what Ladera is proposing, I think is based, not in fact, but based in fear. What we are, what we stand to lose is, in terms of the growth of our community, seems to be far greater than what this, this group is proposing is at risk. There are experts that are part of Ladera who are, you know, as it relates to the gravel pit. They're putting their money where their mouth is. They are, you know, there's a $500,000 bond in place that we can trust, they have our best interests at heart. The gas station opening in Timneth has been my daughter's greatest thrill. I swear it is. I've never seen two kids more excited. I can't wait for them to have something beyond that. You know, what's next for them to be excited about? What's next for our family to be able to be part of? To ride our bikes to something in Timneth and to have something to do, something to be excited about, that we don't have to travel to another community to experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa?
Mara Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name's Mara Johnson, and I live at 6735 Granary Road. My husband and I have been residents since 2017, and we love calling Timneth home. I want to share with each of you. I want to share with each of you tonight how excited my husband and I have been about the Ladera development and the opportunities it will bring to our town. Especially since we both work in Fort Collins, it goes without saying that most of our spending happens in Fort Collins. But since the minute we first heard about this development and it was shared that there could be restaurants, retail services, entertainment, as well as nonprofit support, all located on this side of I-25, we've been anxiously waiting for the digging to begin so we could contribute more to the tax coffers of our own community. And it would be so much more convenient to not have to jump in the car, wrestle a rambunctious toddler, and drive across the interstate to patronize the type of places that would potentially locate in Ladera. We both understand the planning steps a development has to go through, and we're pleased with how thorough the town's process is and that there is community input. My husband is in banking, and my days are spent working with Fort Collins Habitat for Humanity. I want to thank Mayor Sukup for your vision of what you called a kind community. Working for Habitat and having engaged with Respite Care myself, I've seen that when done right, thoughtful growth leads to a vibrant community that meets the needs of all of its residents. We ask that you please make development review consistent so that zoning and day-to-day land use decisions are made in harmony with our community's comprehensive plan, so that it reflects the community will rather than the loudest objectors. Let's set precedent that supports that kind community. My husband and I voted for the mayor and the council members to make the best decisions for all residents of Timneth. We trust that you will consider all Timneth residents and voices as you evaluate how our town can progress and thoughtfully grow. I recognize that growth can bring challenges and that there will always be objections, but let me assure you, these objectors do not speak for our entire town. They don't speak for my family, and they don't speak for many of our neighbors and friends. There are many of us in Timneth who support thoughtful growth in our community, but maybe you haven't heard from us yet. That's because we're really busy living our lives. We're young parents, we're running 100 miles per hour each day in our careers. We trust each and every one of you to make the best decisions for our town so that we can continue living our lives and building community. We're supporters of thoughtful growth that will provide services we can't wait to utilize, growth that will provide tax dollars that we want to, excuse me, invest back into our community and pay for the many services that residents have said they want and that town government has says we need, but they might not have the funds to pay for. Where annexing Ladera would provide tax dollars and financing for transportation infrastructure needs. Mayor and Council, again, I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thank you. I think it goes without saying that we appreciate your comments.
That's it.
Okay. Consent agenda. Any comments, questions? Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reports. Lisa?
I just wanted to give a quick recap on the council chat that was last week. First, I want to thank all of you in the audience tonight or listening who came to council chat. Also, thank you to Starbucks for allowing us to use their space. The last couple council chats that we've had have been outside of the town center building. And I know I personally have been to both of those, and I really like the format. So if you haven't had a chance to come, it's a very informal opportunity for you to voice any ideas, suggestions, concerns that you have related to things going on in the town. Last week, I was there, Luke was there. We did split up, so the comments I'm going to give you are related specifically to the group who I was talking to. And some of these, Erin, I'm going to look at you. Maybe you and I can chat about it at some point if there are things that we can do that don't need council approval. One of the first comments I got was that people are really happy with how our marketing is going. So that was a very positive piece. I did get a couple of suggestions. One related to our new employees, and someone had the idea of sharing a highlight or a photo of them in the weekly newsletters that get sent out to community members. I know we do introduce a lot of new staff here at council meetings, but for those who are not available to come into council meetings, it might just give them a familiar face that they might see around town. So, so that was one of the suggestions. The second thing came up was related to Main Street, and we know we've gotten feedback about there are some residents who don't want Main Street to close. We've seen the signs. But this suggestion was really related to providing some kind of education or explanation to community members about why we are doing it the way that we're doing it. Perhaps showing a graphic or image related to how residents can access Old Town once Main Street might be closed. So just somehow showing that, that Main Street is still open, and here is how you get to it. Another comment came up related to our budget, and two of the things related to budget were a suggestion to hire an economic development person, not as a consultant, but perhaps as a, an actual staff member that can help with bringing in businesses. And then also, this is a comment that I brought up at the, after the last council chat that I heard, and it did come up again about having us look at what it would take or what we could possibly do to somehow compensate council. Right now, council is a volunteer position, for those of you who don't know that. Most other communities in the area do pay some kind of stipend to council members. So I have not personally looked at that and what those numbers are, but that was a suggestion that we got as well. And then one of the things I wrote down, and I, I don't know if I wrote this correctly, but just to let people know that there is a group Together for Timneth that does presentations and education, and I'm going to look to see if anyone can confirm that it's typically every third Thursday of the month. Does anyone out there know if that's correct? Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you. So maybe if, if afterwards I could get some kind of information that I can share out at the next meeting about potentially a website or a way for people to get that kind of information. But I believe that we have two council members who are going to be at the, the next one. And then that's all I had. I just want to reiterate the fact that I really enjoy those council chats, and I feel that the last two that I've been at have been really positive and really productive. So if you haven't been to those and would like to go, I just encourage you to really bring ideas and really try to make it not a complaint session, but really something that we can really take that information and use it. So, thank you.
Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank everybody who came out to the council chats. I want to thank town staff for putting that on. It was, I agree with Lisa, it was an excellent event. At my discussions, we, we went over a lot. So we discussed, Timneth Police Go into 24 Hours Coverage, the future of Old Town, Rodbound, Town Events, different ways for the public input at council meetings, and trucks going through Main Street. By far and away, the biggest conversation at my council chat was metro districts. So we discussed things along of how districts are financed, updating service plans, and how metro districts will be handled when their sun sets. So just for everybody that wasn't at the meeting, there is an event for metro districts that is November 16th, put on by the League of Women Voters. So I think it's going to be a great event. There's been some circulation, and I think maybe the Coloradoan put out information as well on it. So it's probably your best source to find the link for the meeting. So I thank you for everybody putting that out.
And Luke on that, that is something they want you to register for. But there is a Zoom, a web option, so if you register, they'll send you the link.
Thank you, Robert. Just have one more comment outside of council chat. So I also want to mention, hopefully, Chief, I don't steal your thunder, that we have our seventh annual Shop with the Cop for the Timneth Police Department. So if I'm looking at this correctly, that's going to be December 9th with Shop with the Cop. And if you guys would like to make donations, you can contact the Timneth Police Department. Is that correct, Chief? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a quick comment here. What I wanted to share a little information regarding town events and how we've looked at some of the budgeting decisions. Over the last few years, without any change to the overall town events we've been doing, those costs have been ballooning significantly. Over the last, when I first started on the council a few years ago, we were spending $500,000 to $600,000 a year on town events. If we didn't make any changes to town events, next year was going to be over $1 million and continuing to grow at that rate, next year was going to be 1.2, and then 1.5. And so we, as a council, decided we had to be willing to tap the brakes on some of these town events and have several of them up for, can we scale them down somewhat? There's been some questions floating around about the Holiday Lighting Event. And with the choice to scale down events, we're still going to spend about $850,000 next year on town events. That's what we discussed in our meeting. And the projected amounts for the Holiday Lighting Festival in 2023, we're estimating $73,500. 2024, $64,000. 2025, $67,200. 2026, $70,000. 27, $74,000. 28, $77,000. It's an event we are still budgeting for. We are needing to be willing to not either, either choose to not spend in excess of $1 million a year on town events or decide what events we're going to cut. We have to make some choices there. We are not, we've not made the decision to eliminate anything in Old Town, but we are reimagining it, and our town's staff, our event planners are working hard in that process. I want to make sure accurate information is out around there, and I want to make it clear that this was a council decision with input from staff, but it was a council decision. So those vocal voices in the community that have chosen to be belligerent with town staff on multiple occasions regarding these things, this is a council decision, okay? And I hope I don't have to speak on that again. And that's all I have.
Robert? You know, I'll just piggyback on that a little bit, which is one of our consent agenda items today was the first reading for the budget. And for anyone that wants more details about the budget, we did hold a work session. That work session's available online. For example, the, the town events was one of the things that was considered as part of that. So I encourage folks to watch that work session and to continue to submit feedback on the budget for when we, for when it comes up for, for a vote. By statute, we have to have that approved by, what, December 15th? Is that right, Carolyn? Want to make sure folks knew that was out there.
Great. I've decided to make an announcement so that anybody who wants to run for mayor can go ahead and get going. I am not going to run for mayor this next time. I've got, I think several of you know that I've got cancer, and the drugs have a bad hit on my, on the side effects. And I also got a back that's giving out on me, which makes it so, it's real hard for me to walk. So the combination of those two, I've decided that for my health, I need to not run for mayor. I've enjoyed it. The people have been great. I've got a great council that I appreciate and staff that I appreciate. And the town's been really supportive and helpful, so thanks. It was a hard decision. I really like doing what I'm doing, and I think we've made a good, we've made some good decisions here, and will, I'm sure it'll continue good decisions without me next year. Okay. 6A, Resolution Number 68, Series 2023, a resolution opposing the proposed ballot initiative amending the town charter to add a prohibition on annexation of property with open mining permits. Carolyn?
Thank you. So as many of you know, a ballot initiative was submitted to the town clerk for certification as to the form of the ballot initiative. And she did, the town clerk did certify it as a form, so it now can be circulated for signatures. It would propose an amendment to the town charter that would have a prohibition on annexation of property with open mining permits. It has some additional detail in terms of talking about vested property rights would vest at the time, would not, would not be vesting for any property currently under an annexation petition if it was within an appeal timeframe or subject to appeal at the time that the ballot initiative passed. It also talks about some of what it considers the purposes of the ballot initiative, which included protecting the environment and protecting the community. There, we're presenting the town council with a resolution that would oppose the ballot initiative, which is permitted under the Fair Campaign Practices Act, and lays out some of the concerns that have been identified by staff and legal counsel with the proposed initiative. And you can see it, but it, the concerns include that the resolution, the initiative would not accomplish the stated goals, that the initiative would conflict with the goals that the town residents have set in the adopted comprehensive plan and charter, and that the passing the initiative could expose the town to an increased risk of litigation, creating costs and uncertainty for the town. Finally, the initiative could restrict the rights of property owners, town residents, and the town council, because if property is annexed into the town, then it would go through a town land use approval process. So the purpose of annexation is to include property into the boundaries of the town. At that point, the town becomes a land use approval authority. When property is outside of the boundaries of the town, the county would remain the land use approval authority. So that's one of the primary differences between annexing property in and out of the town. So we've presented this for your consideration and discussion and are open to any suggested changes or discussion about this proposed item.
Carolyn, I just want to clarify one thing with you here. Generally speaking, if the, if a development is looking to annex into the town and the town uses its legal authority to choose not to annex a piece of land, that piece of land is still allowed to develop, correct?
Correct. Annexation is a legislative decision for the town, and the property could still develop. It would just be subject to approval through the county approval process. So the town would not have any direct, maybe review comments, but no direct role in that approval process. But they could go through and development through the county land use process.
Okay, so if the town refuses to annex a piece of land, it will develop, it can develop in the county, meaning the town's standards of parking, open space, net height restrictions, all that no longer applies to the development if it's in the county, correct?
Correct, unless the county adopted the same standard. Yep.
Okay, just want to make sure that was clarified.
I'll tell you what, I didn't think I could get Tushak running, being mayor, but I, I think this initiative totally shocked me. It's a nice project. It's something that we've wanted as a town for the most part. The owners are great people. They'll do a good job of making sure that this project's done well. And it'll present and give us some great additions to the town. We will get potentially a restaurant, potentially a grocery store, which I know has been one of the main things that people have wanted. They're working hard at trying to get a grocery store here. They might get an In-N-Out Burger here. There's several things that they're suggesting and working hard at to come in and make Timneth a much better place to live. You know, right now, we've got to leave town to get almost any You know, right now, we've got to leave town to get almost any services that we want. This will create services that we can walk to or drive real close to. So I'm, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that there, this is being done by a group of people and I, I see no benefit at all to this town of signing that petition.
Robert? So Carolyn, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, play this out. If, if this were to pass, then Ladera would come to us with a request to annex. And we would say that our charter now prohibits us from annexing you right now because there's an open mining permit. And so we need to deny your request to annex. Is that denial, is that something that would likely generate, could potentially generate legal action and legal expense to the town?
So there's one piece of property that's currently annexing or has petition for annexation and has an open petition for annexation that is being reviewed by staff, and that is the Ladera Phase Two property. And should that property not come up for a vote on annexation before the election, but after the election, after April, then the, yes, the charter would at that point say that that property was not eligible for annexation, should this pass. I believe that that could generate litigation and challenges. I think that there's a number of legal challenges that could be brought in connection with the initiative.
Okay, so, so one potential exposure is we pass this, we deny the application and Ladera or anyone else that happens to have open minding could sue us.
Possibly.
Another potential is based on the timing of when this passes and certain applications. Based on the wording of the resolution, we could run into issues with whether or not a property right has already vested. And if a right has vested under the language of the proposed, proposed amendment, we would be saying that that right has not vested. And so the question of whether or not the right has vested is something that, that we'd likely have to litigate. Is that correct?
That, yes, that's another possible basis for challenge. Generally, an initiative cannot remove vested property rights. And that is well established case law in Colorado. So that would be an open question under the wording of the initiative.
I know that regulation of mining is largely something that the state takes care of. In what ways does our municipality have or not have the rights to supersede the, the state process?
So that is not within the town's jurisdiction. So if property is under an open mining permit, it will continue to be regulated by the state, which will continue to oversee the permit, which will make the determination of when reclamation has been completed and supervise that entire process. The town by annexation does not gain any ability to regulate that mining process. The town's only authority will be to regulate land use approval, so zoning, subdivision, those types of items. Through the annexation, the town also does not get any liability by annexing the property. They will not be taking on any responsibility to complete the annexation, I say, the reclamation if it's not completed by the property owner.
As a general rule, are development regulations more strict or more lenient in the county compared to Timneth?
I'm going to kick that to your planners.
It would depend on the zoning for that property, but most likely they're a little bit more lenient in the county, depending on what zoning they would have. But yeah, typically the county is a little bit more lenient, more open to multiple types of development than we would here, you know, within the town.
So if this passes, Ladera attempts to annex with it, we deny it in accordance with the amended town charter, then development could continue, but it would be in the county without us having oversight, correct?
Correct. As Carolyn had mentioned, we would probably be referral on that development. So the county would send us any type of development plan just to make sure there's no impact on, you know, drainage or anything else that would happen, you know, within town limits. So we would be reviewing it from that standpoint, but we wouldn't have necessarily a say on dimensional standards, the types of uses, height, anything like that, that would not fall within anything that we would have any jurisdiction over.
And that would be a staff review comment process as opposed to coming before council for a public hearing or a public meeting.
So ultimately, those, those decisions would be made either through the county's administrative process, their planning commission, or the county commissioners. Is that right?
Correct. Depending on the type of development, it, it might be an administrative decision, or it could elevate to their planning commissioners. I don't know many of their developments that do go to the county commissioners. But yeah, it would either be, you know, an administrative review or a planning commission review in the county.
And then under that scenario, if a development, specifically commercial development occurred on that property, would we get any benefit of, of sales tax from that development?
We would not. Since it would stay in the county, we would not get any benefit of sales tax.
There, there's obviously concerns here in that the town would be giving up oversight and control. There's concerns that this could expose us to legal liability. I know that when a prior citizen initiative came by, this council raised some of these concerns and that initiative was later revised and resubmitted. Have we expressed any of these concerns to the, to the folks bringing this forward?
I do not believe that we have. We have not had a conversation with the petition committee, which is a committee of five residents. And they have not asked for a meeting with this, with the town. And so we have not had a meeting with them about that.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay.
I'll add a few more comments when, whenever.
No, I was going to call for a vote. So do I have a motion to approve the Resolution 68, Series 2023, a resolution opposing the proposed ballot initiative, amending the town charter to add prohibition on annexation of property with open mining permits?
I move. I so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I'll add a couple of comments. You had to emphasize a point or maybe add a couple of thoughts. First off, I'd like to ask a show of hands from the council, if anybody on the council thinks we should assume any financial or legal responsibility for reclaiming this mine?
Say that again?
Does anybody on the council think we should, we should assume legal or financial responsibility for a reclamation of his mine? If you do, let me know. No one on the council does. Carolyn, would anybody, would you recommend us accepting any agreement where we take over responsibility for reclaimation of the mine?
I would not.
How about you, Aaron? I'm going to pass this to you, Don. How about you? Okay.
Aaron, since we're recorded, would you vocally say your answer? That was a no.
And Don gave us a no as well. So council has no interest in assuming reclamation responsibilities. The staff wouldn't recommend it. I am going to take the petitioners at their word that this is their purpose of their, of their proposal. Going by news reports, the developers themselves have stated that the state will see this from cradle to grave. The town would have no oversight. And annexation filings from September state, annexation of the property by the town will not transfer reclamation responsibility or reclamation costs to the town. Similarly, annexation of the property by the town will not transfer jurisdiction over the mining permit to the town. What I want to emphasize here is this is an issue that nobody disagrees on. I, I'm not sure why we're having to spend town resources drafting resolutions or discussing this. Everybody agrees what should happen here. And the only explanation I can come up with is we have a group of people that won't talk to the town or they won't listen. I, I don't know why else we would be here discussing an issue that we all already agree on. And it's really difficult to work together when we have an issue we all agree on, but we have a group that wants to create a fight about it. It doesn't make any sense to me. I, I, I wish we could meet. I, I don't, how do we meet on ground where we already agree is where I'm, I'm expressing some frustration here. My other issues with this is harms to the town, which have been discussed, as well as the legal risks to the town where, again, yes, we're, we're trying to invent or create a backdoor appeal process. There's already an appeal process for town votes relating to property rights. This seems to just want to invent its own process that, again, is just going to lead to legal problems for the town and won't accomplish anything. I think we were fortunate to avoid legal troubles in the last petition that did end up going through, even though it included some of this language. And I think in the end, it's because it just wasn't worth it for that business that was specifically targeted to sue. Luckily, the town had the, the card of a tax incentive to play and we weren't going to, we weren't going to give that if the town didn't want us to. And so it wasn't worth their while to, to make legal trouble for the town. So I think we got lucky on that, but we're not going to keep getting lucky. And so I guess in conclusion, I'm, I'd really ask if we can have some quality and thoughtful approach to how the town is managing development growth and from those who want to be involved in this process. And then we have to acknowledge that the town government doesn't have dictator-like powers to just control what everybody has to do and force everyone to abide by every little whim that we have. We are one player at a table with 20 other players and they all have the right to make their own moves in reaction to the things that we do. And if we're reckless or thoughtless in the moves that we make, we can seriously harm the community. And we've discussed several of those ways that are specifically harm the community. So I'd ask the group that's looking to, to push these kinds of things to please consider carefully the possible consequences and responses to this petition and include, consider including and listening to town staff and council members in your discussions. We're eager to share the benefit of the direct experience we've had in these kinds of matters and bring the direct benefit of our access to town's professional staff, our accountants, our legal, our engineers. Let us be part of this process so that we can avoid needing to have discussions that really are a waste and don't bring any benefit to anybody. So I, I am strongly in support of this resolution.
Luke, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Brett. I, I won't hit on the litigation again because I absolutely agree that there's increased risk, to say it lightly. I just want to say that when I was out petitioning or talking with residents, because I wanted to run for town council, one of the things that came up was, hey, we need a grocery store. We need more opportunities here in the town. And people want to shop locally rather than going to Windsor, Four Columns. I, I don't know if you guys go out to the, the King Supers in Windsor or, you know, have to drive all the way to Four Columns. It's, it's rough. And I agree with the comment that was made earlier that with a, I've got two young children and we are running at 150 miles an hour all the time. And it just seems like when we look at this, that's really against the desire of what a lot of people want here. And that was one of the things that just kept coming up over and over when I was talking with people out and knocking on doors. So I, I think it's, it's just one of those things where we need to really step back to Brett's points, have some real conversation and think about what this can do to the town, both legally and financially.
I'm going to add one thing that hasn't been said. To run this election, it's going to be, Melissa, you can help me. Is it $30,000?
I expect this election to cost the same as the June one, which is close to $30,000.
So I mean, we're spending $30,000 for, to me, a, a bad proposal. Okay, so we've moved the motion. Now we need to vote.
Can I just make one quick comment, Mark? No, that's fine. So whenever any kind of issue is before me, I always try to look at the pros and the cons. Pros and cons of supporting or pros and cons of opposing. And this is one of the, the few that I see a whole lot of, if, if this charter amendment were to take place, I see a lot of cons. But I, I mean, I see a lot of cons if it, if we end up doing this, but no pros, where usually it's kind of like you're, you're looking and you're kind of weighing that balance. But for me, this is a little bit of a no brainer. So.
Okay, do I have to call for the vote or do, yeah, so I thought, so can somebody? Do, do I do it myself?
Yeah, you could just call for the vote. You don't have to roll call vote.
Okay, so I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries by 100%. I skipped over something that I wanted to do early. You had, you gave me the idea and I don't think we ever done it. Justin, have we ever introduced you to the people? I mean, Justin, Justin's got one of the top positions in our town and people should know who he is. So do you mind standing up and grabbing one of these guys' mics and give us just a little bit of background on you?
Justin Stone, Colorado native for my whole life. I grew up in Sterling, Colorado, 100 miles east of here. Went to Los Angeles after I graduated from CSU. I figured out what a great place this area is. Always tried to find our way back, especially with family. I was luckily able to be my hometown city engineer for a while, public works director at the city of Sterling. Then I went to city of Loveland for the last 20 years. My wife and I actually moved to Timah three years ago. So we've actually had this as our town for three years and very impressed with the town, very excited, love the events and everything else. And just very happy, thrilled, excited to serve the community, especially that I live in. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and your town position?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, public works director and the town engineer.
Why don't you, why don't you just say two sentences about what a town manager does?
Oh, I'll let, I'll let Aaron talk about the manager, but for the public works director.
Public works, I apologize.
Yeah, so public works director involves everything, deals with life, you know, you got to try, when you go to work or whatever, you're traveling the roads. We make sure that the roads are built to a certain safety and standards and then also we maintain them, make sure there's no potholes. Also for snow removal, which we've been lucky so far this year. Hopefully we didn't jinx that. But we don't do utilities here, but we do mainly the transportation, infrastructure. And then as far as the town engineer would be, just help with the design of that infrastructure, help design and also with development review too. So especially with a growing town like Timneth, it's really a lot, the developers help build a lot of the towns. We work with them and make sure we get, build it for the future.
Thanks, Justin. Resolution Number 69, Series 2023, a resolution approving the Willis Farm Sketch Plan. Kevin?
Hello, your mayor. We're gonna. I love technology. All right, there we go. So as you mentioned, this is the Willis Farm Sketch Plan. The applicant is Willis Estates LLC, represented tonight by John Turner. The applicant is TB Group, represented tonight by Kristen Turner. Here's where we're at in the development process. We are here at the beginning of the major subdivision process. We've already gone through kind of those first three steps in the process with a comp plan amendment, annexation and zoning. So we are at the very first step of the major subdivision, which is this sketch plan, which is more of a high level conceptual idea of what the development would, will ultimately develop that as. This property is located north of County Road 42E, west of Main Street, about eighth mile south of Prospect Road in the new Timneth Middle High School. The zoning of this property is majority industrial, light industrial with a little corner of estate residential, kind of in that northeast corner. So this sketch plan proposal is for roughly 80 acres in size. This sketch plan. This sketch plan proposes six industrial lots with three estate residential lots in that kind of northeast corner. The industrial lots will range from roughly seven and a half acres to roughly 13 and a half acres in size. And then the estate residential lots will range from just under an acre to just about 1.3 acres in size. The estate residential lots are separated from the majority of the property by the Lake Canal ditch. And those will solely be accessed by Main Street. With the industrial portion of the property, it will be accessed by County Road 42E and then McLaughlin Lane from the north from Prospect. This proposal also will include a regional trail connection going from the southeast portion of the property up along the Lake Canal ditch to the northwest portion of the property. They are also at this time proposing roughly 16 acres of open space, which is meeting the required 20% open space for the development. A neighborhood meeting was held for this development on September 25th to share the proposed plan and gather any feedback. Roughly four tenant residents attended that meeting and their questions and concerns are noted in the attached observation report in your packet. Planning Commission did review this application and recommended approval by a vote of 5-0 at their October 17th meeting. Staff has reviewed this application in accordance to code. And it, the staff finds that it meets the town's zoning map and land use map for the comp plan by being designated and zoned with the industrial and then state residential. They are also going to be providing, it's a functional system of land use with internal roads, large lot employment and regional commercial opportunities, which is adjacent, adjacent to county residential to the west, which has that same designation. And they are providing utilities that will come from Main Street and 42E in conjunction with the Fisher subdivision to the south. And so staff finds it to be in compliance with the land use code. With that, I will turn it over to Kristen, who will probably just have a quick touch base on all those items.
Hello. Is this on? All right, you guys can hear me. I'm Kristen Turner with TB Group and we've been working on the planning for this project and we'll give the screens a second for them to, the plans to pop up. All right, I'm going to skip past that vicinity map since we've, we've already talked about that and we've seen it before. So we're back in front of you. We were here previously to annex and zone the property. And as Kevin mentioned, we're at the very beginning of the plating stages. So it's the sketch plan process. This is essentially a concept plan for what you can anticipate seeing with the preliminary plat, should this be approved. We don't have all the details at this point. We haven't gotten into the engineering and the really specific components of this. But we, what we have had an opportunity to do is take that high level code requirements and apply it to the site. So we're ensuring as we, as we work through this layout, that we've got an appropriate amount of open space. We're ensuring that our roads meet general road standards, that our access points are located where they need to be located to meet standards. So again, really those high level components that we then dial into when we get to plating where we have more technical data. So this is just under 80 acres. We are proposing six industrial lots that you can see the, the purple lots on the plan. And then three estate residential lots north of the ditch adjacent to the county residential properties. So those estate residential lots will be compatible with the neighborhood that is already there. They range in size from just under an acre to a little bit more than an acre and a quarter or so. We've got about 16 acres of open space and the open space that's shown on this plan is really perimeter open space. So one thing that's important to keep in mind is that the process for this would be to move through the sketch process. It would then go through plating and then after plating, specific users for each one of those lots would come forward with a site plan as well. And so that would go through another town process. As part of that site plan process, they'd be required to show building locations, parking locations. They would have additional landscape requirements that would apply to each one of those individual lots. And that site plan would, would come back for everyone to review and comment on as well. So there are additional components. There will be more landscape and more details that come forward as, as these lots move through the process. We have located the regional trail. So the, the town's plans call for a regional trail that moves through this property. So you'll notice that it runs up Main Street and then it runs along the ditch corridor to the northwest corner. And from there, as other properties develop, it will connect to the rest of the regional town system. So that'll be a nice addition to, to the community. You'll notice that buffer along the north end, it's a nice big buffer. We are currently showing a buffer that varies. It ranges anywhere from 60 feet to about 130 feet or so. So it's different in different areas, but it's going to allow for a good feel, ample space for, for planting trails and just to provide that nice buffer between the existing community and the development that may be proposed for this property as well. So at that, I'll wrap up my presentation and just remind everyone that this is meeting all of the town master plans, comp plan and land use code at this time. It's, it's a plan that we're excited for, for this property. So we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have a question for Mr.?
I have just a couple. The state residential that, that's in there, is that selection kind of there primarily for buffering between the existing residents that, that are on the north side of the canal there?
Sure, so we just felt like that land use made sense there. It's residential directly adjacent to residential, so that makes sense. It serves as a larger buffer between the county community and this development. There is an existing home on the property that the hope is to maintain and, and keep that there. And so it opens up the opportunity for a couple of additional homes in that area. And it just felt more appropriate than trying to do additional industrial in that, that little nook.
With respect to the, the traffic flow, I, I see that this area is accessible through McLaughlin Lane and then also through the Fisher residential property there. And I guess I'm curious, is, is there any concern about, you know, commercial traffic associated with this? For whatever reason, favoring the, the residential neighborhood as opposed to coming out to McLaughlin there?
Sure, so the, the traffic won't necessarily be going through Fisher. We do have our road access aligned with a road that's proposed as part of the Fisher development. But I think it would be assumed that more of the traffic is coming from 42, so off of Main Street. So this development would not force traffic through a residential neighborhood. They would have opportunities to take other roads and not travel through those residential sections.
And I suppose from the residential perspective, you know, this could give them a, another way out of their neighborhood potentially that, you know, maybe if they were headed up to, up to the interstate or something, that McLaughlin would be a better way to do that as opposed to coming out on County Road 5. But that's all kind of to be determined exactly what that looks like.
Well, and 42 is actually approved as part of the Fisher development. So, you know, depending on timing of different projects, if Fisher were to, to develop first, 42 would be built with, with that project. So there would still be an opportunity to access McLaughlin from there. But again, it always comes down to timings of developments and what portions of roads are built. Whatever moves forward will be responsible for making sure that the appropriate road accesses are in place and that there's appropriate fire access and all of those technical components are in place.
And it's really great to see the, the pros trail through here. Is that something that would be developer completed there? Or is that something that the, that the town would otherwise assume that responsibility?
That is a developer responsibility.
You bet.
Questions for staff. Pardon? I have questions for staff.
Okay. So.
So Ms. Turner, you can go ahead and sit down.
All right, thank you.
So Kevin, in review criteria two, it talks about this is compatible with the adjacent existing and proposed land use designations. What we're seeing on, what we're seeing on this map is where it is now, not what the proposed is, is that correct? Like, so, because it says it's, am I looking at it correctly? So like, it's rural residential in Limer County. Is there future that's going to be different than that?
No, so to the north, it is still that rural residential for the county. What we have in our comprehensive plan designated to the west of this property is also employment and regional commercial. So abutting this property along that McLaughlin on the west side, on just the other side of what is, what will be McLaughlin in the future is also employment, regional commercial, because it also has access from the frontage road off Prospect and some of those others that give that kind of employment, regional commercial as well.
Sorry, I should have said to the west of the property.
Yeah, so the estate residential, you know, to the, to the north or on the northeast side of it is, you know, compatible to that development to the, to the north, the county development. This was part of the, you know, comprehensive plan amendment that we went through about a year ago for this prior, earlier this year, I believe it was, you know, kind of talking about those, you know, compatibility. The, with an industrial development like this, especially at large lot, there is a little bit less intensity from a traffic standpoint. So it's kind of hard to tell on this map exactly, but I'll try and point it with the arrow. So there's a portion kind of right here in the middle, if you're following me there, Luke. That actually is set up, was set up in the county to be a through street from that neighborhood to the, from the north to this property here. With a development of industrial, there's actually not a need for that. So it actually also cuts down on potential cut through traffic and additional traffic into that neighborhood. So yeah, from a traffic standpoint, with, you know, large lot industrial compared to potentially, you know, 200 homes, there is, it is a little bit less intense from that standpoint. That was kind of all, all of the discussion that we had at that comp plan, if you don't know if you remember that.
Yep, thank you. And in review criteria four, it says staff will continue to monitor the potential impacts on adjacent land users or uses. And so can you kind of walk me through what that might look like or how someone can present concerns to you guys if that?
Yeah, so as, you know, you know, we get through the process, when we get through plating and then each one of these is going to have to come in with a site plan. So at that point, depending on the use, it's either going to be a permitted use or a conditional use, depending on what the intensity of that use is. So if, you know, in the future, we have a use that does come in, that is a conditional use just because they might have a little bit more intensity than normal light industrial. Staff, planning commission and you all have the ability to look at that, that use and that site to determine hours of operation, lighting, buffering, screening, some things like that. If it's a permitted use, as we go through, a staff will review, make recommendations on anything like that to try and mitigate, you know, anything to the adjacent property to the north that can be done. You know, as mentioned, there is going to be more open space requirements by each lot as they develop. So there will be more landscaping buffering, not just what's shown here. So part of that design will also be, you know, can the landscaping be done in a way to help additional buffering to the north and things like that?
Thank you.
Okay.
This is a public hearing.
Public hearing. So Melissa, is there anyone?
I'll open the public hearing at 7:05. I do not have anybody signed up to speak. I will close the public hearing at 7:05.
Do I have a approval of, someone make approval for the resolution number 69, series 2023, resolution approving Willis Farm Sketch Plan?
I move to approve resolution number 69, series 2023, a resolution approving the Willis Farm Sketch Plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor of resolution number 69, series 2023, a resolution approving Willis Farm Sketch Plan, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Resolution number 69, series 2023 passes unanimously. Resolution number 70, series 2023, a resolution approving grant of easement and agreement for Red Barn property. Carolyn?
Thank you. So this should be one of the last things or the last thing you're going to see for the Red Barn property. You have now gone through and approved the plating and subdivision process for the property. This one is a little bit independent. In order to develop the Red Barn Coffee Shop, they are required to put in a sewer main and it's going to be a sewer for Spain because it needs to have the pressure to go uphill. And the, they have asked for an easement through the town's property for the Wildwing Park. And the town, the reason this is coming before you is anytime the town is granting an interest in property, whether it be an easement or a conveyance of town property, it's going to come before you guys for approval. So that's why you don't always see easements, but you're going to see this easement because the town is granting the easement to the property owner. So it will be an easement that would be 19,477 square feet. And the town has estimated that the value of the property is approximately $2 per square foot and it's customary to have an underground easement to be approximately 50% of the property value for the overlying property. So we have asked for and the property owners have agreed to pay a total of $19,477 for this easement, which is $1 per square foot for an underground easement running through the park. The easement agreement does contain protections for the town, including that the maintenance, the construction and maintenance will be the responsibility of the easement holder, the developer of the property. And also that there's an indemnification, that if there's any damage to town property or any liability resulting from this line being running through town property, then the town would be indemnified for those costs. So at this point, we are comfortable recommending approval of this resolution.
Any comments?
Sorry, just a question for you, Carolyn. I saw the map on here and I just, so Wildwing Drive, is that on the far north side of Wildwing Park? Is that where we're looking at? Okay.
Correct, it's on the north. It runs parallel to Wildwing Drive on the north side.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, so do I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 70, series 2023, a resolution approving grant of easement and agreement for Red Barn property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 70, series 2023, a resolution approving grant of easement and agreement for Red Barn property, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Resolution number 70, series 2023 passes unanimously. All right, can we go in the exec session for these three all together? Or do we have to go one in another?
Yeah, I think it's easier to do them each, not easier, but I would recommend doing them each independently.
So you recommend what?
Three, three most, just start with the first one, please.
Mayor, I'm, I'm just curious, I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm wondering if we have outside counsel that's providing feedback on either of these, if maybe it made sense to move the agenda around to, to handle those first.
Yes, so that would be six E would be then moved up to be the first executive session.
Okay, that's fine.
You just need to tell Hope you're sorry.
So I need a motion for executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6402 for B and parent for parent, parent E, Aaron, for a conference with the attorney for the town for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and for determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations. developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators relating to, relating to the DARA Phase Two annexation and financing of capital improvements thereof, related thereof.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Second, we need a second still. We need a second.
Second.
Okay, we are in executive session.
With me.
So Carolyn, do you want to go next or you want Hope to go next?
Um, whatever you prefer.
Are you going to be here? Uh, okay. Hope, why don't we do you next? Actually, I don't think yours is going to take more than five or 10 minutes. So Aaron, hit the road. Aaron.
All right. You guys can call the motion though. Do you want to call the motion while you're working on it?
Sure. So um. I'd like to call motion for executive session pursuant to CRS 2464024F for the discussion of personnel matters related to the annual review of the town manager. I just thought, were we getting recorded?
Okay, so, so with the motion and second.
I move to move to the executive session.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Oh, those favor say aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimous.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Actually, it was out there.
So. You know what? They're total gross. We think.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
Um, so I move that we get an exact session. Twenty-four minutes, things that poor. Receiving legal advice on specific questions. Disconnections also. Do I have a host?
So moved.
That's second.
Second.
Uh, the pair say aye.
Aye.
Those, we are now.
Jeff.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.